I'd like to start the meeting, call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance and the flag behind us at the baseball field. Is there one over there too?
Yeah.
There's one over there. Stand either way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing in our own light, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thanks for coming everybody. Thanks for coming everybody, did you hear me back there okay?
Yeah.
Alright, it sounds good. I'd like to thank the Harson Island Sinclair Flats Association for letting us use the facility over here. You know, it was scheduled, this meeting was scheduled for the island and we wanted to keep it on the island but with the governor's order, we were a little nervous doing it in the lines also. We chose to do it here and I think it's the first time we had a township board meeting outside in Brownsville. So, a couple firsts, that's kinda cool. So, that being said, roll call please.
Sandy Kupal?
Here.
Krista Regan?
Here.
Christie Hilton?
Here.
Artie Bryson?
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. Joanne Shirkey?
Here.
Mark Fershow?
Excellent excuse, might be Mark pulling in now. He'll be the only one that gets a little wet. Alright, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda under new business 11, a part-time billing office assistant. Okay, motion support, any discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next we have bills payable, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion for bills payable in the amount of $204,850.85.
Okay, motion support, any discussion? Roll call.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Sandy Kupal?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Alright, next we have the supervisors' report. Last couple years starting out with a high water report, nothing I gotta tell you guys, you guys know it all already. Actually, the waters dropped about three, four inches since our last meeting, which is a really good thing. I followed the Corps of Engineers guide in Elginak, some people around here follow the one in the lake, but it's only at 577.9, we're below the 578 mark. Going forward, the Corps is suggesting that it's gonna drop a couple more inches in September and then keep on dropping for our seasonal fall, how much, we don't know. And as everybody knows, you know, we get little rain events or wind events and the water can pop up a couple, three inches real quick. Like it did actually Saturday night, Sunday a little bit. But at least we're on the downward trend now. Then again on the COVID, you know, we've got good, we have good numbers in township. And where are we at now, are we at two, three?
I'm on vacation.
I'm not sure, we're on vacation. We're at two or three, none on the island. And boy, this rain, it's kinda cool. Cool as down. School's been open, it's been pushed back to September 8th. And that's all going, far as I know, unless anything changes. We're working on doing some more food giveaways. And there goes our fire department on call. Uh, let's see. The road commission was actually scheduled to pay from Lake Point and Muskrat Run last week. We tried to flip, do a flip flop on the days because they're gonna do Muskrat Run on Tuesday, which is the same day of election. And I thought they could do that Monday and do Lake Point on Tuesday, but for some reason the contractor said that's not possible. And so we, I was told then, we put it back for one week, but it's been two weeks now and I still don't have an exact date when they're going to show up to do that paving. I did talk to the road commission on what they thought our next road project should be for next year. I had a list of about four or five roads, a short list. And I did put it in my report, basically what they told me, that Phelps Road is pretty rough shape and they'd like to do that first. Given the condition, they suggest they would seal the road with chip seal treatment first and then place a two-inch overlay of asphalt. The estimated bill for that whole project would be $280,000, it's a longer road, it's 1.6 miles. They suggested though, we could split that up in two years. And that way, you know, we're pretty good at it. We're supposed to get a matching grant for a road project every other year, but for the last eight years, we've gotten them every year in a row. So, and they're just assuming we're gonna get them now, keep on going. So, they basically said if you split up two years, you get a hundred grand matching grants to pay for that. So, that's what they're suggesting we do. And if I don't hear any injections from the board, I'll file the matching grant paperwork for that road project and go forward with that for our next meeting. So, our first year, the bill would be for next year would be $140,000 and our cost would be 90 grand after the $50,000 match. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we do have a tentative agreement for the IRA police contract. Still looking at a little bit of language on it. Chief Coach did have a couple questions and he did have a conversation with IRA about that today and I think another conversation is scheduled for Wednesday. So, once we get that ironed out, and it is before IRA Township tonight, so we'll bring it to our board. And as I mentioned before, we're starting the process to see if we should bond out our liability for our murders pension plan and if it makes sense to do that. Been trying to work with Comcast. For some reason, I got a lot of Comcast calls this week complaining about the service, really. But we're trying to, this is before the virus hit and everything. We have four roads in the township, Morrow, Starville, Partisport Out and some other areas, but Comcast doesn't service. And I was trying to get a cost on what it would take to get broadband to all those roads and see if it makes sense we could split it up with a special assessment for those property owners because they're at a disadvantage now and like I say, especially more than people working remotely and kids from school and stuff. It's almost as unneeded service as like electricity does. And see if we can do a special assessment, spread it over 15, 20 years or whatever and put it on their taxes that way. Because right now, you call, they call Comcast and say, oh, it's gonna cost you $12,000 for us to hook up and it's, well, that's too much money to hang up. So, we're trying to negotiate a better cost for them and then a way we can spread it out. Truthfully, I haven't been able to get a price from Comcast yet. I've been pounding on their doors and they're just not really responsive ever since they did their shutdown with COVID. And I don't know if they're just still playing catch-up or what's going on there, but we've been attempting on that. And I had other people asking, can we get another service? And I don't know if anyone remembers, it was about six, seven years ago. You know, a lot of people were calling WOW and I did too. And this one lady said, oh yeah, you know, if we get enough people requesting service from your area, they'll spend the money and get it in there. So, I put it on social media, call this person up, ask for WOW, tell them you're from Clay Township. Is this supposed to rain today? I'm glad we're under here. You know, call WOW service and see if we can get it here. And it was actually this person's boss called me up and said, WOW will never come there. Stop calling, tell us to stop calling. And one big reason is they're not gonna put the best money in switches and infrastructure and facilities to come this way when they have a river that, you know, they can't service Canada. They're gonna put it in a direction where they can continue add-on, add-on, add-on. And so I told that story five, six times to people this past week because I guess Comcast has been slow this past week in our area. So, just wanna let everyone know we're getting ready to ramp up. We're gonna step up enforcing some more of our flight issues. Not sure if our last meeting, we passed a new order, we adopted the international building code. And this is a new tool that we can use for, hang on to your papers. It's a new tool for enforcing things as far as flight and also the dangerous buildings. And just to let the board know. Uh-oh. We just lost power.
Aw, God.
So, I'll speak up. Don't you love it? So, we actually have two court cases pending right now for flight enforcement. One on Nook Road, one on Field Road. We have an area scheduled for August 31st and I'm assuming we're gonna have favorable decisions from there and going forward. Music, is Cassie Irving still back there? A little bit, we do have some chairs here. Music in the park on the mainland is all done. We do have one more, it's back to the rain. It's gonna be right here in Brownsville, September 12th. And it's a really, really good band, Sin John Smith. We've had a place, they rock it up. They were good, they rock it, they're good. Everyone's gonna get up and dance and bring it to the stage. And we're working on a food truck too. I reached out, we have two or three food vendors that live in Clay Township, they can't do it. So, we just reached out to some other counters, Fire and Ice, the rice is one that hopefully we get. So, I'll have more information on that soon. We're still working on our saw grants in full swing that I signed paper Thursday for another $136,000 draw, a $1.1 million grant we have for our checking out our sewer system. Got really good news for it. Got a text today from Jack, our health insurance guy, as he was getting on a ferry in Massawa, Iowa. And he says Blue Cross Food Shield is renewing our policy with no change for our rates. And I estimated actually 10% increase in our health insurance spot. And that's really our largest expense in our whole town. He did say there will be a little bit of a plan change because we're going from a small group, 49 or under, to we're over 50 people now. And I thought, and how that's, how that's determined, they hired more full-time people, but they taken our part-time people and I think what it is, we got more part-time people working for fire departments and that's what it's over. That's it for the supervisors' report. Okay, how we doing guys? Yeah. You guys doing okay back there? Okay. Guys, move up a little, I do got some chairs up here. Alright, now right now we have a bubble comment, do we have any bubble comments? I got a mic right up here, it's grabbed. Well, it doesn't work. It kinda sucks.
Hi, in the lower, 7311 M L A. I noticed on the agenda an item for 911 agreement with St. Clair County. So, I went to the township office because this is one of my things that I'm not very happy about. Because I don't understand why Clay Township is the only police department in St. Clair County that pays for and maintains their own 911 dispatch system when everybody else uses the St. Clair County central dispatch. And there's some kind of a debt and the best I can figure out from that packet, is it a $520,000 debt?
What it is, how 911 funding works is the state collects money for all the cell phones and they send that money to counties. And we would not receive anything. We have zip unless we have a contract specifically with the county. And they don't have to redo it. But I, and let me back up. About 20 years ago, they did a bond for 800 megahertz towers county-wide for communication. And the bond was to pay for that. And it's about another year, year and a half on that bond to pay it. They gave us a contract as long as we pay our share of the bond. And so, they came to the meeting and said, hey, Artie, will you extend this contract for one year or 14 months, whatever it was? And continue to pay for the place portion of the bond. And I told them, well, we do it for 10 years, extend it for 10 years. And so, we basically have a five-year contract and we do it for another five years and when the bond's paid off with 14 months or whatever it is, we get 100% of that money for our dispatch. The reason we have a dispatch here, I'd love not to have a dispatch, but they, central dispatch cannot properly dispatch because they don't know the area. And they fight it and it would be a horrible mess. I've seen lots of digs come up and, you know, folks, the chiefs, the back yells and other people. They don't know our area, sitting in an office in Florida and someone's involved and, hey, I don't know where I'm at, but I'm sitting in front of a buoy, a green buoy with 23 ounces.
Well, is 911 automatically matched for cell phones? It's not the same way that's all about.
Well, not necessarily. But that's a discussion I have with our own dispatch. And it went through the vote of the people, I'm not sure how many years ago for this special stuff. It's about 10, 12 years ago and a path overwhelming to keep our 911 here in the fund.
So, is that in the packet, that $520,000, is that our debt?
No, actually it's a lot less. I'm not sure, it's ours when we send them.
How much? The last quarter was 28,000 dollars.
We're paying $28,000 a quarter and we have about five or six more payments to do.
So, what is that $520,000 debt that's in the back of the packet?
That's their total debt, the county's debt, not our debt, for the whole county.
Okay.
And we're worth paying our share.
Now, now that we provide services for IRA Township, how much does IRA Township pay Clay Township or dispatch?
Well, it's basically wrapped up in the whole police contract. We don't charge a specific dispatch charge. You know, we put off the whole.
I'm gonna tell you, the system sucks because I know of people in IRA Township as well. Personally, I was in IRA Township, I called 911 from the Dallas General in IRA Township, not once, not twice, but three times and I got disconnected every time and Clay Township Police Department called me back to find out what I needed. There's a disconnect somewhere with providing services.
Which, which dispatch, which did you answer?
I got, I got one more time, I never got connected, three times I called, never got connected.
What happens, a lot of time when you're higher on the cell phone, you get connected either through a phone or St. Clair County Dispatch, not ours. And what they'll do, they'll call our dispatch, hey, we got a drop call from this cell phone. And that's probably what happened and our dispatch called you back.
Well, Dallas General can't be a hassle my own from the St. Clair County mine where my house is. So, you're telling me that I'm gonna get dropped if I call from my house too?
Right, we'll find out.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna.
It's not taking hours, but I'm just telling you probably what happened.
Well, I don't, I find it hard for me that we are the only police department that central dispatch can add to county.
We are actually the backup service for central dispatch. They, it was about two years ago, they went down, the whole central dispatch went down. They rotted all bars, all the traffic in the whole county, the art dispatch. And we just, and that's why we're there.
So then, why are we still paying the debt to St. Clair County who is their backup?
You're looking at a long bond payment, you're looking at a water refund payment.
Well, that's what I asked because it starts to go from this document, you're asking what our debt is.
It's not on here, this is just nothing to do with the debt. That's the county debt for the county 911 money that they gave 20 years ago. This is extending our 911 funding mechanism so we can continue to get money from everyone's cell phone bill to refund our own dispatch.
But we're not getting that until the debt's paid off.
We get it, we pay.
That's right, every quarter and then call up state, state, the county's credit back every quarter and then he gives you back a portion of it for our debt. Okay. Alright, you know the other, I am, I'm still waiting for, get on your calendar, this is Paul Burke. I really wanna get out.
I had discussions and they're not gonna give a place until the water drops down. I, there's a lot.
I talked with Tommy myself, so I'm not gonna get on board and admit and give us some back of the station that says that, yes, we screwed up, we didn't do it, we should've done it, and how long are we gonna plan to fix it?
I'll probably be able to get a letter that says that they will hook one in there.
Well, more than once.
Well, we're. Yeah, absolutely, that's what they'll, that's what they're gonna say. They can't do it until the water goes down. And they verbally told me that. Yeah. It's there, it's gonna be inherited, so.
Well, you know, I've been talking to you about this for over a year now.
Yeah.
And you kept telling me that your home was there and I kept telling you they weren't.
I told you they were there and I showed you.
The last time.
I showed you on the map where this should be.
So, we have the map that they're there and not, so.
That's right, I did.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Any other bubble comments? No other bubble comments? Alright, moving right on, consent agenda. It doesn't work.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the radio board meeting minutes of August 3rd, 2020 in Central Forest and the Sinclair County Roadline.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Anything that needs to be discussed on the consent agenda. Very nice, all in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, under new business, we're revisiting the purchase of a high-volume pump for the Elginak Water Plant. The company that's supplying it to Murphy, they were, you know, they basically said they're gonna do this for $20,000, it wasn't much in the scope. They, I did contact the Elginak Water Plant Manager, Andy. He says they're well aware of the scope. They're actually put in two others in the plant already and their original supplier of them in the plant. And they actually have the scope worked out with HRC City, who is their engineering company. And HRC signed off on it. So, like I say, they had a quote for the $29,986 and we did have a quote, I didn't attach it on there for, I think it was $10,000 or $39,000. So, under the contract with Clay and Elginak, any expenditures over $20,000, $20,000, they need written approval, saying yes or no, or we stand mute in a third day if it becomes. Uh, yes. Artie, is this, I'm sorry. You wanna make a vote please? Oh, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the Murphy Electrical Services High Water Pump for $29,986.
Support. Yeah, motion support, go ahead. So, the high water pumps, we've worked, have you replaced two already? They have two in there, the third's off, they have three banks. My dumbness right now, they have three banks. Actually, Chris knows it better. And two of the banks have these pumps with the. The BFDs, Artie. Yeah, the BFDs. Do you want to convert this to a BFD? Cause right now it's either on or off, we want to convert to a BFD to match the other three. It's a variable speed, so it supplies as much water as it needs from the demand instead of 100% out, 100% out. I thought it from the system was more efficient. I mean, I recommend, what they presented is, I recommend. It saves on like speed spikes, water pressure, if I turn it on, it can cause front brakes in the water mains. I give somewhat of a small water hammer going down and it's a lot less, or a lot more efficient with electricity. So, John, you're on board with the pumps replaced, you would like to see that pump replaced?
Yeah.
Any other pumps, does it sit on a shelf or does it get broken apart, resold?
No, they're all used, hasn't been used.
Right, so this is, this is a replacement of an item, right?
I'm sorry?
This is a replacement of an item?
It's actually an upgrade.
It's an upgrade?
It's not even an existing pump. It's an add-on, the pumps stay there, the BFD is a drive, they can add on to it.
Okay.
The pump stays in place, you just add a BFD to make that pump very good.
I got it.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Sandy Kupal?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Is there a rainbow, it should be a rainbow. Okay. Next we have a request for ma- Next, we have a request for master plan update distribution. Uh, Plan Commission sent this, uh, and they wanted our permission so they can just distribute the draft to our, uh, local communities that are neighboring us and to the public.
Did that necessarily distribute it to us? Cause I haven't seen it.
Yeah, they, they sent them, like, it's out there. Let the record show that Mark Rashard is now here. A little sorry.
How about you have a son of the island?
Brown, brown.
Do they have power over there? Cause we don't. Okay, so, uh, so we have a request for a master plan update distribution from the Plan Commission. Anyone wanna make a motion? I'll make a motion. That we, uh, allow Giffel Wester and the Plan Commission to distribute the rough draft with the Plan Commission to our neighborhood, uh, our neighboring communities.
I'll support that, Marty.
Okay.
I assume, I assume that process goes.
Yeah, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
Can we make updates to the rough draft prior to it being sent out if we know that there are issues with it that we don't want?
This, this process, it's, it's still a long process. So it's gonna be public hearings. Um, they'll probably come to our board and present where we can have input to. Um, so, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a rough, rough draft.
I just feel like this rough, rough draft has things in it that the planners put in that are just going to potentially spread rumors within the township if, if they're left as they are.
Right.
Well, that's why I thought I'd ask about, why don't they do a presentation to us before they expect us to authorize it being sent out to everybody?
Well, not even everybody, our neighboring communities. Well, we're gonna look at it, oh, we look at it?
Right.
I mean, this is, I signed it to you, and it's there.
You said it already?
Yeah.
Chris made a good point. Uh, the reason, but just the opposite of that, the reason that we're doing this is to make sure there are communities coming out. So it's questions to be asked, that can be understood and explained at that point in time. So that's, that's the reason that we're going, that we all voted to do that, is one of them.
What do you say to Martin?
I thought that was Martin's question.
Okay, do we have any, I'll, I'll send that link out to everybody again on the board. Um, it's about a hundred and forty page document.
I saw it.
Yeah.
Well, keep in mind, we've already had public hearings on the same.
Again.
And it was quite information meetings as well.
Yeah, last fall.
It's, it's no secret of what's going on. And people have to understand that it's not gonna happen overnight or whatever. There's no imminent domain process going on or ever will be going on. It's only the property that people are worried about being consumed is just, uh, it's a wish list, that's about it.
A living, a living document that's changing.
Yeah, there was public hearings we had over at the Township and the Lions Hall last fall. Um, and I'm not sure when, when it was presented to us. It was before the virus lockdown. Um, it was presented to us.
Yeah, I, I know it was presented. I just wish that there was a way for us to revise things that we don't necessarily, you know, if that's something that the planners are looking at other communities and they're trying to create a model here, someplace in the city, when we're not the city, why can't we update that before it gets dispersed out? Because we're the ones that get the calls or see it on social media platforms that say we're doing things and we're pushing for things that no one is pushing for.
Right. I, I understand, that's just, I mean, it's the function of the Plan Commission to come up with this. And, and that's basically what, what, what they've done and what they're in the process of doing.
The master plan isn't designed to hurt anybody, especially our community. It's designed to enhance the vulnerability. That's the whole process.
And some vision for twenty years from now.
Maybe we can get a couple of rough drafts that we can look at and unclear a couple of things on hundreds of pages that you can look through it.
I thought we had a lot there already.
Yeah, but, but print it so we can see it.
I, I see a link on January seventeenth.
Yeah.
You forward it up. Uh, and I remember having problems before. The link is currently in there.
Really?
So I don't know if... Well, we'll send it out. It's just a signal issue here?
Yeah, it could be. I don't know. I'll send it out again.
I would just like to read it in conjunction with, I don't have to have first read on it, but anyways.
Right.
As long as I'm included, what they're prepared to send out.
Dude, is it the board pleasure that we postpone it until our next meeting? I'll send you guys the link and, or you just wanna, wanna...
I would just like to be able to read it as you ask questions, so it's a little bit more up to date.
Right. Can we just put in a, in the motion, a provision for us to resubmit or resend out a copy of it?
Yeah.
Along with the request for, did you get it, the distribution list?
Chrissy got the link.
Well, the one that I'm looking at says initial draft vision and goals with six attachments.
Yeah, okay. What was the date of it, Chris?
That one's from February twenty first.
Is it, is it, did you do a master plan search? Do a Giffel search?
There's a link on building department.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one's...
The one on the building, our website's not working.
Uh, that one.
I don't know if it's a signal or what.
Tom, you're judging today, you guys gonna look at it before or not?
I am.
I guess, I know you're gonna.
I'm starting to speak out of line, but thank you, Mark, because I think it's a dream or whatever, the proposed future plans. I think we have a right to know, and I think that's good, though, that's being shared. And it's a draft.
That's right.
It's only in planning has it even gotten to be...
And I, I've already basically pretty put it out.
It works on the website.
It does work on the website. So, all right, so what, did you, who made the motion?
You did.
Oh, I did. Do I need to amend it?
No.
Okay, I'll rephrase it, uh, that we, uh, uh, the motion is that we, uh, share our, uh, the master plan rough draft to our neighboring communities and residents. Any more discussion? Very none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next is, uh, we have a match grant, grant, uh, the total project's forty thousand, we paid twenty, uh, and, um, it's, uh, twenty thousand will be paid by the CFSEM Trails Maintenance Grant. Don't ask me what it stands for. Um, it's, uh, the Wilson Foundation Grant that, uh, was given to the, um, St. Clair County Community Foundation. And is to do maintenance on the bike path that runs from the Elginak border to behind the state park. And we just need board approval. I, I shipped this letter off and, um, and it is a budgeted item under, uh, 101-265-970, capital L, over five thousand. So do I make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the matching funds for the bike trail from CFSEM for twenty thousand dollars.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Like I said, they, they kick, it's a one-to-one match. They kicked in twenty grand, we kicked in twenty grand, and we get forty thousand dollars. And I don't know if anyone's been on that trail. Um, part of it's underwater, but there's a lot of, uh, work, there's a lot of, uh, problems where muskrats and, and, you know, made holes underneath it, and we'll spend every bit of that forty thousand dollars. A lot of, a lot of tar, seals, and he's done too.
Is y'all gonna help with any of this?
Well, not in, I don't know if Elginak, this is for Elginak's, I don't know about Elginak's portion of it. I just care about Clay Township's portion of it. I am not, I know they weren't awarded a grant, so it'll be up to them to maintain it. This is, uh, just in Clay Township, from the bridge going north. And we own the bridge too, but the bridge is in shape, bridge shape.
Just asking.
Yeah.
I know who benefits that for the more than anybody does. I respect Clay Township, they still have it, they can mark, right there at the market.
Right.
So we can continue on, so.
Yeah, I, it's great for bike, I, I see a lot of people on that. All right, we have, uh, motion and support. Any other discussion? All in favor, roll call, please.
Marty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Mark Rashard?
Yes.
Sandy Kupel, yes. Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton, yes.
Okay, motion carries. I think there's like four other communities that, you know, uh, also did this grant. And not everybody would, or at least were awarded. I don't know if Elginak did apply and just didn't get award or, or what, but we got, we, we're awarded it, so. Okay, next, uh, we have special assessment. Resolution 2020 is for Beauregard Drive Private Road Maintenance. And, uh, as you can see, uh, it's ninety-four percent approval for their road maintenance. What, five years, I believe?
Five, yes.
Yes, five years.
It's also setting a public hearing for September eighth.
Oops. And we're, uh, setting a public hearing for September eighth on this.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020 dash twenty for the setting this public hearing for September eighth for the special assessment of Beauregard Drive for private road maintenance.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. I'm sorry, this is for setting a special, or the public hearing. Then we'll do the public hearing and then be able to prove it afterwards. Motion and support, any discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Mark Rashard?
Yes.
Sandy Kupel?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Marty Bryson?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have same type of a resolution for Brockner's Island for their private road maintenance. And this is also a five-year, um, special assessment. And they turned in an approval of seventy-five percent.
Make a motion to approve the Resolution 2020 dash twenty-one for a special assessment in Brockner Island Private Road Maintenance. We're setting the public hearing on September eighth, 2020.
Support.
Okay, any, uh, discussion? Very none. Uh, roll call.
Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Mark Rashard?
Yes.
Sandy Kupel?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Marty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Next, we have our Amendment One to our, um, 911 funding agreement. And basically, this is, uh, extending it five more years, as we briefly talked about. Um, they have, um, what is it, like a year? Is it twelve months or fourteen months?
They gotta walk a little over a year.
Yes, I thought.
For all of the, uh, the bond, for the, for the infrastructure.
For the, uh, bond for their, for the communication powers. And, um, like I mentioned it before, how this works with the state, all the 911 monies collected from cell phones is distributed from the state to the counties. And unless we have an agreement, we get nothing. Um, and with this agreement, it ensures us that we will continue to get our share of 911 funding. And it's a five-year agreement that can be, be extended another five years. Um, and with this, we also, uh, are going, are agreeing to pay for our share of the bond payment, which is what, two hundred and eighty, or twenty-eight hundred dollars a quarter, around there?
Yes.
Um, until it's done. And then we'll, for the next nine years, we'll be getting a hundred percent, or keeping a hundred percent of the 911 fundings, uh, towards us.
And we were state audited on this, was it in the fall?
Yes.
Or over the winter?
Yeah. Chrissy said we were audited on this, uh, state audit, uh, this last fall, so. Um, looking for a motion to approve me to sign, uh...
More than I'd like to make a motion, that we approved the 911 agreement with St. Clair County Amendment One, the Agreement for Debt Service Payments, House of Clay dated seven twenty-one of twenty.
Support.
Okay, motions and support. Any discussion? Very none, roll call.
Mark Rashard?
Yes.
Sandy Kupel?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Marty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have, we get to recognize a very deserving person.
I'll grab the mic, it's still on. Good evening. Um, I'm here to recognize one of our firefighters in the fire department, Brian Sears. Would you come up, please? I wanna tell you guys a little bit about Brian, which, uh, I've learned here in the last few years, working with Brian. Uh, Brian has been in the fire department for twenty-three years. He started with the Harson's Island Fire Department and then merged with the Clay Department, Clay Fire Department in, uh, two thousand and eight. Brian is reliable and trustworthy. He is dedicated to his community. Some of the things that Brian has done in his career, he's had five CPR saves, which is great. Uh, and numerous ice rescues and water rescues. When, uh, things are ready to, uh, get bad and stuff, Brian's there, he's always there to help. Um, he's, uh, like I said, he's very trustworthy and he is very reliable. We're fortunate to have him on the island, uh, working for us in the department. Uh, so, it's, uh, my honor to, uh, present Brian with this Fire Department Act, uh, to celebrate his time and years in service.
And, you're going to do it with that, is this bike? They can't shop with that ass sometimes.
Congratulations, Brian. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Pretty cool-looking ass.
Is it sharp?
We'll find out. That's awesome. And I'll add to it, you know, when things get bad, Brian, Brian's usually the first one there, too. So, very good. Next on the agenda, we have, uh, Fire Department, airboat. Um, we've been looking at airboats for a while, board knows, and it, this is a budgeted item. Uh, go ahead.
Um, yes, um, Fire Department, uh, would like to purchase a new airboat. The airboat we have, we're kind of growing out of it. Uh, that boat was a clay boat, uh, for the Everglades. And of course, we use ours mostly in the winter time. So we're looking for something that's a little bit larger, longer, and a little bit wider. Um, we're also looking, uh, the motor that we have on there is carburation, and we're looking for something that is fuel-injected, which, uh, happens with the one that we have. We're gonna shut it off with a diesel, with a heat truck. Chances that we... Chances that we could blow that motor or do something to it, so we would like to upgrade our boat. Boat we have now is 2005, and we would just like to upgrade our equipment. And it's for the safety of the firefighters too, along with the residents on the island when we're transporting them across during the wintertime, we have these ice boats.
This would be a much safer boat, wouldn't it?
Yes, yes.
And more dependable. What are you going to do with the old boat?
We'll sell that.
Have a trading value on it?
Uh, anywhere between 20 and 30,000.
Really?
That much?
One of the reasons we're getting new, all new, instead of taking the radios and equipment off our old boat and put it on a new boat, this is very marketable to another fire department.
Okay. That's what all we have, outfitted.
Right.
Some of the other things that we're getting on the new one is an ice break, so when we go across sheet ice, and as you're going across, it's like you can't stop, and this will have somewhat of a break, so safety is your mind when you're picking people up off yours.
So if you sold it for 25,000, or now that has to be 30,000, then 35,000, well, the judge will give it.
I'll make a motion for us to purchase that boat for the total price of 84,011 dollars and 65 cents. Support.
Okay, motion support. Now that comes...
Out of the line item, the capital outlay group was 206-000-97100. Who did it?
Is it?
That's the wrong account number. We didn't budget out of capital outlay. We budgeted it out of rescue equipment.
Yes, rescue, capital, rescue equipment, over 5,000.
So that account number is 206-000-97000. You're wrong.
I made your motion to 97...make it 997. 0697.
This comes with the nice communications with the headphones, so they can hear themselves Work lights are safe. Does it have any closure?
Uh, none, none at this time.
Okay.
Can you see how much that costs? We couldn't hear you playing the phone over.
Total cost outfitted is 84,011 dollars. Yep.
And who's paying for it?
The fire department.
And the old ones?
The whole county? The fire department's paying for it, yes.
The whole county?
Yes.
The old boat's going to go for it?
I'm sorry, what?
The old boat's going to go for it? You said the old ones were...
Yeah, we're selling that. Whatever we sell for goes into revenue for the budget, for the fire department.
Actually, the boat will be used for the whole township, not just for one side.
Right, the whole township benefits from it. We use it a lot on rescues, duck hunters.
We used it a lot on raft duck last weekend, two weeks ago.
And like I say, it's a...Chief did a wonderful job managing his budget, and he had a surplus, and this is how it's done, some of the budgeting process, that we can afford this because of Chief's, actually, good job of managing his budget. Hey, Brian, do you think we should get a new airboat? You drive that thing all the
I gotta get a few injections on this.
Yeah. Okay. Any more discussion?
So let me just bring up one point to be clear. We have some huge capital outlay for next fiscal year, right? We've got a couple of fire trucks on order, right, to the tune of more than a million dollars. And this in no way, shape, or form will pinch our budget for the coming expenses that we have forward. We're not going to be able to work our way, and we're not going to slow the receipt of those fire trucks down by the purchase of this.
We also have an application in for a AFG grant. So hopefully, we get one of those. That'll also offset the cost of those trucks too.
Like I said, we're paying for the trucks and this airboat through the budget process. Our payment for those fire trucks are going to be around 100 grand, which is in our current year budget, and for 10 years, a little over 10 years, but...and yeah, so I mean, you know, it's up to us to keep our guys and our residents safe, and that's what this is doing in my eyes. Any more discussion?
On the headset quote, it says rescue boat system and then pumper system. So are we getting a headset for one of the...
That was, I think I probably put the wrong...because he was supposed to give me a quote on both of those for the engines. The first quote is for the rescue boat. And that should have been...
From com source, or? You mean it's just included on the same?
Right, he put it...I may have gave...given you the wrong quote. For that headset system installed is 6,769 dollars.
Say that again.
6,769 dollars. I can already do that, that quote. I apologize. And then there's a new radio going, 800 megahertz radio, I would be installing that. A lot of our radios are beautiful now. They're 15 years old. It's time to replace.
What's the delivery time on this?
Four months.
Four months? Yep. Any other discussion? Let's get her going. Roll call.
Sandy Kupfer?
Yes.
Chris O'Ryan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Mark Kishard?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Good job, Chief.
Thank you.
Our hard work is paying off.
Yes, it is.
All right, next we have police department DTTI maintenance or CAD system. This is a yearly maintenance agreement, right, Chief?
Yes.
Same as last?
Yes, this is what covers our CAD software for CAD.
Right.
And it's continued. We work with this, and we also work with the assessing department with this. Anytime new addresses are alive, we also add those to the plan.
We're looking to motion to approve the DTI maintenance agreement. The annual maintenance cost is 1,875 dollars. It's budgeted from light out of 207-000-768.
Okay, motion support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone not good with it? Motion carries. Okay, next we have our refunding bond payments. This is for our water. This is the last big one. I'm not sure what we ended up doing was we had three or four bond payments with the township for putting water on Harsons Island, for putting water in the back roads in Elginac, doing work...doing work, it was for county road, and a little bit of work in the...oh, no, it wasn't the water plant, that's a separate one. But anyhow, we had these bonds, and we were paying between 5% and 7% interest, which was crazy. And it was about four, five, are you here? Five years ago, we did this?
Just before.
So it's like...
2014.
2014. And this is ridiculous. We're paying all this interest, and the water, actually, the special assessment for water on Harsons Island was, excuse the pun, but underwater. And the one for the back roads too, was in serious jeopardy. So I went to work, and first what we did, we got the township bond rating from the Dunbar Street DMV. We got it up to AA plus, which is the gold standard for municipality. You can't get any better. And then we did a refinance bond to pay for these, retire these four bonds that were outstanding. And we sold the bond on the open market, and we basically, it was a $3 million bond to cover those, the rest of them, and we sold it for 1.87% interest. And that basically saved a little over 250, somewhere between 250 and 300,000 dollars a year doing that. And this is the bond that we're paying, and how this bond was set up, this is, we have a $500 payment, or 500,000 coming down to principal this year, and the next two years, it drops down to...
455 and 465.
Yeah, quite a bit. We got two more years on the bond. So this bond, it saved us a lot of money, and I believe it was a good thing. So we have two more years to pay on it after this, and this is basically out of our water department. So do we have a motion?
No. I'll make a motion for the 2014 refunding bond payment for 505,000 in account number 591-0003-0001, and the principal payment of 15,981 dollars and 25 cents out of account Support.
All right, we got motion and support. Any discussion?
The principal and the interest were flipped, so the principal payment is 505,000, right?
Yes.
The interest itself is 15,981?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Will the motion reflect that?
All right, we have motions and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Chris O'Ryan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Mark Kishard?
Yes.
Sandy Kupfer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next we have part-time building office assistantship. You heard my supervisor's report, we're going to be getting more aggressive on blight and on dangerous buildings. And our building department is very busy, and you've been witnessing that inside. And right now, we're taking our enforcement officer and our building inspector off the road for doing a lot of paperwork in the office, and well, where they could be out driving around and, you know, doing more enforcing. And so this part-time person would actually assist them in getting their reports together and doing their paperwork in the office.
I'll make a motion to approve the township Clay Building Office Assistant job description for a part-time person.
We have motion and support. And this will be a part-time position.
Got a question?
Sure.
If I call the office today, I have a ton of different relations, many offices. There's only one person answering the phone, the assessments department and the building department. Where's everybody else at?
Cindy's on vacation this week. Henceforth, we have a shortage.
So when the building department doesn't answer the phone, it goes to treasury?
Okay, so that is all.
So there were three people in the front office today.
So I guess my point is, well, this is going to resolve those problems. They have one person jumping around from different departments and...
Yeah, if someone is with a customer...
Trying to maintain stability.
That doesn't mean that the call is not going to go to another department if they're both with someone or they're on the phone. But the call is being answered. It's not going to voicemail. It's going to someone else to try to...I mean, the treasury department tries their best to help when someone calls for assessing in their transfer or building in their transfer.
That's my point.
Any other discussion? I make a motion to make a little recess.
17:50?
Head, aye or aye? I'd like to reconvene the meeting.
7/27?
7/27. We had a motion and support to hire a part-time building office assistant. Do we have any more discussion right now?
This person is reporting to the clerk.
Yeah, I personally think this person and the...
Admin over there?
The admin should report to the building official, but we can tackle that at a different time if you wish to.
It's by board policy that's set in our administrative manual.
Yep.
I get it. If there's a move, I tell you where I feel, if there's a move where we can get our building official to be on board with us a little more than currently this, but I think there's a possibility he would be able to handle the additional moves.
I do too.
Something like that. But if he's part-time, you know, I understand the way it's set up right now, and I don't want to disrupt the whole deal.
Right.
But I certainly would like to revisit that if our building officials' hours change, or if he can offer additional guidance.
Yep.
Or days in the office.
All right, motion and support. We have motion and support. Do we have any more discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, board member comments. Cindy?
I'd just like to congratulate and give many thanks to Brian Sears. He always seems to be in the right place at the right time, and thank Chief Rose for his diligence, working within his budget to make these purchases for our fire department possible.
And again, congratulations to Brian Sears. Good job. I know what it takes to be a firefighter, especially for all those years my hats off to you. Planning Commission, on the 26th of this month, we're going to be discussing the Stone Road Estate Condos, 1900 cell channel, waterfront fences. Still in communication with other entities as far as that's concerned. Also be discussing the master plan. Again, the meeting is on 7 o'clock, August 26th. Unfortunately, it's a Zoom meeting I have scheduled, so if you need the Zoom website for that, you can get it on our, get it on the Clay Township website as well. Thank you.
Joanne?
Well, kudos from me to Brian and to Chief Rose, getting a stated budget and getting a brand-new airboat, ice boat. And the DVA is Wednesday, is Wednesday, and we're on Zoom also, because there are a few important issues before us, and I don't think we have the capacity, the amount of people that would show up for that meeting. That'll be this Wednesday at 7 o'clock on Zoom, so it's all I have to say.
I just want to echo the same comments about Brian Sears. Congratulations. It's men and women like yourself that contribute to our department and make Chief Rose's day a... a little bit easier. So, thank you very much. And Chief, good job keeping your department, retaining the good help and recruiting the good help. So, thank you.
Courage, knowledge, and bravery are not things that you can buy, and they're things that you have to earn, and inherently, some people are born with and some people aren't. So, Brian, congratulations on your 23 years of service, and I'm really happy that you're part of our department, and I'm really grateful of all our first responders each and every day here in Clay Township. Thank you.
What could I say that hasn't already been said? I would agree with everything that everyone's said.
Yes. I, I couldn't have gone to a better guy. I've known Brian, I think Brian, we met on the school bus, on Uncle Bob's bus. Am I right?
Yeah.
And he would stop and get his turtles, little turtles, when they, they go across the road. And like I said, I've known Brian a long time, and this goes to all of our first responders, but especially Brian, and, and, you know, even Chris, they all, our first responders are our true heartbeat of our community and our true heroes of our community. And it, we owe it to them to protect them as, as much as, as we can, because they're the ones protecting us. So, that being said, uh.
The motion adjourned?
Yeah, all right, the motion adjourned. This is a wild meeting. We had rain, we had sun, we had wind, we had a little bit of everything, so. All right, thanks, Harson's Island Association, for allowing us to be here, and everyone have a good couple of weeks. Thank you much. Anybody? Thank you for having me.